Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry, I had a small technical issue here. Call to order, the Pierce County Council meeting for April 18th, 2023. The time is 3:01 PM. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kruber?
Here.
Councilmember Denson?
Here.
Councilmember Herrera?
Excused.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Here.
Councilmember Mello?
Excused.
Councilmember Morell?
Excused.
And Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
There's four members present, Mr. Chair.
With four members present, we do have a quorum. I do know that the other three are in Washington, DC on council business, and that's why they can't be here today. So that, moving on, we have a pledge allegiance to the flag, to be followed by moment of silence and tribute to our men and women in the military here and overseas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to today's agenda? Seeing none, it's fairly light agenda today. Seeing no changes or corrections, I will consider the agenda to be approved. Next up, we have consent agenda. Do we have anything that we need to move off of consent agenda?
There's no attending on line, but it might be in the audience.
Do we have, is Joseph Derace here today? And I think that was the only one. Okay. Then I will look to Councilmember Hitchens for motion on the consent agenda.
Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, been properly moved and seconded. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kruber?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is four ayes and zero nays.
All right, on a vote of four to nothing, consent agenda is adopted. Next up, we have messages from the executive judges and prosecuting attorney. We have none. Section seven, proclamations awards and/or appointments to boards and commissions. And we'll start with proposal number R-2023-46. Councilmember Hitchens for motion.
Chair, I'd like to move R-2023-46.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R-2023-46, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming the week of Sunday, April 16 to Sunday, April 23, 2023, as days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust in Pierce County, Washington. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution, annihilation of European Jewry and Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, during which six million Jews were murdered alongside millions of other innocent victims on the grounds of race, color, religion, nationality, ancestry, physical or mental disability, political belief, or sexual orientation. And whereas antisemitism, which played a primary role in motivating the Holocaust, is a challenge to the basic principles of tolerance, pluralism, democracy, and the shared values that bind us together, and an evil that threatens not only those who subscribe to the Jewish faith, but all people, no matter creed or background. And whereas, in the 1860s, when the earliest Jewish settlers arrived in Stilichum, the Jewish people have played an important role in creating the great diversity of our county, and we stand arm in arm to oppose hate speech and actions against the Jewish community. And whereas, the civic commemoration of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments. And whereas, in 2023, the day of Yom Hashorah, Yehudah Zikaron Lashoa, Vela Guvurah, which is formally referred to as the Holocaust Martyrs' and Heroes' Remembrance Day in Israel and around the world, and coincides with the 80th anniversary of the Warsaw Ghetto uprising during World War II, falls on April 18th. And whereas, we express our continued support for the revised code of Washington, Chapter 28A-300, or .300.115, encouraging Holocaust education as a reaffirmation of the commitment of free peoples never again to permit such occurrences. And whereas, pursuant to an act of Congress in 1980, Public Law 96-388, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance for the victims of the Holocaust, which this year is Sunday, April 16 through Sunday, April 23, 2023. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that the week of April 16 to Sunday, April 23, 2023, is recognized as a week of observance of the Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust Victims in Pierce County, Washington, and we honor the memory of the victims, survivors, rescuers, and liberators of the Holocaust, and work to promote human dignity, confront hate, and counter antisemitism, adopted this 18th day, April 2023.
And I believe we have with us today Matthew Erlich from the Holocaust Center for Humanity. Please share a few words.
Thank you very much, and well done, Councilmember Hitchens. Your Hebrew is better than mine. I'm here on behalf of the Holocaust Center for Humanity. I'm on their speakers bureau. The center was founded in 1989. It provides education across the state and a speakers bureau available to schools and larger organizations. Just give the center a call. I'm here to talk about my mother. And if you indulge me for just a few minutes, I will be able to provide you with some ways to perhaps prevent Holocaust in the future. Felicia Erlich died about 10 years ago from stage four lung cancer. They gave her six months. She lived six years, which by the end of this brief talk, you will find not a surprise at all. However, she was born June 24, 1940, I'm sorry, 1934, excuse me, as Felicia Levkovich. And she can be found at the far right of the image that you see. And this picture was taken in 1938. With her is her family. She was one of seven children. In the middle there is her mother, Rosalia. Next to her in the hat is Zigmond, her father, who was a carpenter. And on the far left, the person peeking away there is their maid, Helsha. We know this was taken in 1938 because Zigmond and Helsha pass away that year. At any rate, in Krakow, Poland, it was growing up like any child, playing in the park, doing all sorts of things. Of course, when the war starts, things change dramatically. And Felicia flees Krakow only to be ultimately arrested and taken to Auschwitz. Her number was tattooed here. A25049 was her number. And when she arrived at Auschwitz, they took her blood. Now, it's not like today where you have juice and cookies. When I say take her blood, they were draining her because they needed the blood for helping Nazi soldiers who are injured. So, so much for the purity of the Nazi race. At any rate, she is there in, she arrives in August, excuse me, of 1944. In October, she is moved to Bergen-Belsen, which is in northwest Germany. And she takes a train ride with some 3,000 others in cattle cars stuffed with people. She said she was always lucky because she was at least near a crack so she could get some fresh air. Of course, not everybody in that cattle car survived the trip. And at Bergen-Belsen, when she arrived, she would tell you that it was even better than Auschwitz. There were no crematoria. There were about 6,000 to 7,000 inmates there. Sadly, by the end of the war, there were 60,000 to 70,000 inmates there. And when the British recovered, liberated Bergen-Belsen on April 15, 1945, they found 10,000 bodies strewn across the grounds of the camp. Felicia nearly died there of typhus. She suffered, she always talked about leaving the barracks, and there would be piles of bodies. And when you would walk by the bodies, sometimes that pile would move because not everybody was dead yet. If you think about images of the Holocaust, many of them come from Bergen-Belsen. The British essentially razed the camp because of the rampant disease. And now, I think you could change the photo. Of everyone in the picture that you saw, the only person to survive the Holocaust was my mother. When I talk with groups, I talk about, you know, if you think about times you've spent with your grandparents, cousins, uncles, aunts, I have none of those experiences. My family starts with my mother. And that's what the Holocaust did to me and my family. So, I promised to try to give you some sense of how do we stop this thing? The first is empathy. You may be in a position where you have been arguing with someone. Maybe you have completely different views. And I would argue that it would take, try some empathy. And it takes a lot of courage to do that. When I talk with schoolchildren, I explain that, hey, that kid eating lunch alone, maybe sit next to that kid. Or that joke, that practical joke that makes fun of another student, instead of laughing, maybe say that that's not such a good thing to do. And I tell them that that takes a lot of courage to do that because they are going against the group. So, I say try empathy. The other thing that comes to mind is lowering the rhetoric. We have a lot of people who claim victimization in this country and then decry that they are facing some sort of Nazi-like persecution. Well, we know what Nazi-like persecution is, and we've seen it. And if we can lower the rhetoric a little bit, maybe we can actually solve issues rather than trying to conjure up images of the Holocaust. I have one other thing to share with you, and that is, Felicia did have an eldest sister, Lola, who survived and was in Paris during the war. And this is a Star of David, the yellow star that Jews were required to wear. Now, it says "Jewif" instead of "Yuden" because, of course, it was in France, not Germany. But this is what people wore, and this was kept by our family since the war. And so, it's not something that's, for me, it's not something that's in the past. It is something that's very real. And I thank you very much for allowing me to have the time to at least present a glimpse of my mother's life to you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for sharing. We'll actually do a photo with the proclamation here in a little bit, but we're going to give other people a chance to speak. Did anyone else wish to speak, or anyone else signed up on this? I'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Did anyone in the room wish to make comment on Resolution Number 2023-46? Is there anyone online wishing to make comment on item number R-2023-46? Please press raise your hand icon or star nine on your phone. Not seeing any. We'll bring it back to the council for comments. And I'll begin with Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for taking the time today to come and share your history and some words looking forward of how we can make sure this doesn't happen again. I think it's positive to have something to do moving forward and learning from our history so that we do not repeat the atrocities that wiped out millions of people for a variety of reasons that when we look at them and we realize we're still fighting about those things, and that's what's so frustrating and why, as government leaders, I think it's so important that we do things like this, that we say that we stand arm in arm with the Jewish community and say, we will not tolerate hate speech and hate actions in this community, and then give people the tools as we can to try and dialogue with each other. So, thank you for the work you do with the Speakers Guild and Bureau, I believe is the title you gave, and just appreciate the work that we're doing, and we'll continue to honor and remember and learn from mistakes. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll echo those same thoughts of Councilmember Hitchens, and thank you for coming, Mr. Erlich, and telling us the story of your amazing mother. What a story of resilience and, and I'm sure a lot of mental as well as physical strength and fortitude. And thank goodness she did because, you know, you're here today and able to share the stories. Councilmember Hitchens said it's so important for us to remember. And remember that this was not all that long ago, actually. And we see some similar themes, you know, throughout history since, which is frustrating. So, we need to make sure that we're remembering. The one thing that I will add is the emphasis on how important it is to talk to children about this and make sure they understand how their words and actions impact others and making sure that we're all feeling like we belong. And that empathy is so, so important and keeping things in perspective, too, in terms of rhetoric. So, thank you so much for all of your work. It's so important and very important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Kruber?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for sharing that information. It's, I don't know that it would ever get really easier as time goes on. But it expresses the knowledge that sometimes it's hard to be human. And we've had another proclamation that shows how evil can take over and how evil can be. It's like they are making themselves their own god, and nothing matters. And I was reminded of when my son had gone for a field trip in junior high to DC. And when he went to the Holocaust Museum or Memorial, I know that made an impression on him forever to see those things. I don't know that I could do that. That's hard stuff. And I came across a story that, it was when you mentioned that your mother had been in the cattle cars, and I was watching a video, and it had where, when they drove by the churches, they just sang louder because they could hear the screaming, and they wouldn't, they didn't want to acknowledge what was going on. And that's kind of hard to think that we do that. And the other thing was, you know, all the propaganda. I remember in the news they would have, it never happened, they're lying. And I'm like, how, the evidence is there and how they can ignore that evidence on that. And so, you know, thank you for sharing the story, and we can never let that knowledge leave. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Kruber. And I'll conclude again with my thanks, and thank you for coming and sharing and really putting a human face to a story that we hear a lot about, but we don't always get that personal connection. You know, I have been to DC and stood in the Holocaust Museum there, and it is just devastating to think man's inhumanity to man. And I'm thankful for those that survived, continue to share that story. Those who are descendants of that, please keep shouting it from the rooftops because we can never allow it to become complacent. You're right when you talk about the lack of empathy and the rhetoric and the way that we, Councilmember Kruber says, you know, how did they not see it? And yet, I see things in today's society that we tend to overlook. And let it be the lesson that when people tell you who they are, believe them.
Chair, I mean, they saw it. They knew. They just didn't want to acknowledge.
With that, again, thanks for the counsel. I think we have to take a vote on this. So, Clerk, if you'll please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kruber?
Aye.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is four ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of four to zero, the motion passes. So, if you please come on up, we'll take a quick photo. And then I have proclamations, and please, you can join with if you wish. Please. Come on around. All right, I'm going to take a couple photos. One, two, three. One, two, three. Let's get one more. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Well done. Next, we have a proposal, R-2023-50. Councilmember Denson for motion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I move proposal number R-2023-50.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk, will you please read?
Proposal number R-2023-50, a resolution of the Pierce County Council proclaiming April 22, 2023, as Earth Day in Pierce County, Washington. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Councilmember Denson to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. Whereas, on April 22, 1970, millions of Americans joined in common cause to demand basic protections to safeguard our planet for future generations. And rooted from this cause came the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and landmark legislation that protects the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the animals that live alongside us. And whereas, as we reflect on this historic day of activism and stewardship, let us embrace our commitment to protecting Pierce County, Washington, along with its abundant natural resources for future generations. And whereas, in March 2021, the Pierce County Council adopted the Pierce County Sustainability 2030 Plan with the goal to reduce countywide and county government greenhouse gas emissions by 45% by 2030. And whereas, Sustainability 2030 focuses on five areas. Energy and built environment, expanding the use of clean and renewable energy. Transportation, minimizing commutes, increasing the use of public transit, ride sharing and active transportation, along with promoting electric vehicles. Consumption and waste management, expanding greenhouse gas reduction efforts and solid waste and recycling. Carbon sequestration, increasing the use of carbon sequestration best management practices. And education and outreach, increasing awareness and understanding of greenhouse gas emissions and their impacts. And whereas, where we have made remarkable progress in protecting our health and our environment, we know our work is not yet finished. We each have a role to play in ensuring that we do not pass a world beyond repair to our children. And whereas, on Earth Day, let us all accept our individual responsibilities to care for the world we live in and let us marshal our best efforts towards building a safer, more stable, and more sustainable world. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pierce County Council that Thursday, April 22, 2023, is Earth Day in Pierce County, Washington. And I'm just realizing this should say Saturday, April 22, 2023. Earth Day in Pierce County, Washington, and residents are encouraged to join Pierce County Parks for an Earth Day celebration at Meridian Habitat Park from 12 to 4 PM, and to visit www.earthdaysouthsound.org for conservation activities to participate in during April and beyond, adopted this 18th day of April, 2023, by the Pierce County Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. We have a couple people to speak to this today. First up, we have Ryan Dix, who is our Sustainability Resource Division. Do you have others to bring up with you?
What a great sweater.
I wore it just for the whales. So, somebody said it's on brand for me. So, my name is Ryan Dix. I'm the head of Sustainable Resources. We do environmental education, solid waste, as well as Sustainability 2030. Thank you for the proclamation around Sustainability 2030 and Earth Day. I've been lucky enough to meet Dennis Hayes, the head of the Bullet Foundation, who actually was a part of starting Earth Day. So, I've heard some interesting stories about how that all went. And I wanted to say that, you know, in our field, a lot of people say every day is Earth Day. And I know that's a lot of the way our environmental educators look at it. They wake up every morning excited to talk about the environment. And I think our whole organization really is that way. And I think, more than us, I think surface water management. I think parks. I think probably close to half of the Pierce County staff is working on issues that surround the health of the environment. And we don't always think about that, but oftentimes, the sheriff or people in finance have a role in trying to make sure we do green, good things, green things, and clean up our environment. I also would like to briefly acknowledge that the tribes come first on this. They care about the environment probably more than most of us. And we have an honor to keep working with them to try to improve the environment in Pierce County. With that, I would like to pass it to Kyla Wilson, who's on the Sustainability 2030 team, and she's going to talk about some events that are coming up that people can participate in.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, counsel. Just wanted to highlight some of those upcoming events and where to find out about what you can do to participate in Earth Day and events happening all month long for Earth Week, Earth Month. So, we actually worked with our communications team to put together a brand-new webpage on the Pierce County webpage. You can find it at piercecountywa.gov/earthmonth. And there you'll find all of the events that the county is hosting in April and into May as well, related to gardening and composting, Earth Day events, and more. There's also some links to external calendars of events. So, there's also a link there to that Earth Day South Sound page where you can find lots of events hosted by other partners all across the county and the South Sound region. I wanted to highlight that this Saturday, our team will be at the South Sound Sustainability Expo on the University of Washington Tacoma campus along the Prairie Ridge Trail there. And Parks will also be, of course, at the Earth Day Celebration Event at Meridian Habitat Park. We also have some upcoming virtual classes on composting this Thursday, the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30. Next Thursday, there will be another class specifically on worm bin composting. The Thursday after that, it'll be all about gardening without a yard. So, lots of great gardening and composting workshops coming up. And we are also hosting a Sustainability 101 class on Tuesday, April 25, and again on May 11 for introduction information about sustainability, what we do at the county, and all about the work we do. And there will be a similar recycling 101 class hosted twice in May, on May 2 and May 18. So, all of that information is available on that Earth Month calendar at piercecountywa.gov/earthmonth.
Could you repeat the last, sorry, the last three on there?
Yeah. So, the Sustainability 101 classes are April 25 and May 11. Yeah, um, so the Sustainability 101 classes are, uh, April 25th and May 11th from 6:00 to 7:30 online. And then we have the Recycling 101 classes on May 2nd and May 18th from 6:00 to 7:30 online.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, and we also have joining us today, um, from, uh, Pierce Conservation District, Dana Coggan, with, again, as always, the best tie in the house.
It is Ties Day. You always have your meetings on Ties Day. We're so well prepared.
And you are always prepared.
Well, thank you. Um, thank you all very much for, uh, doing this proclamation. We all know that, yes, Earth Day, we think of, is every day. But I think it's really important for us to highlight it during these times where we can all gather together to do good work together. Um, I want to also point out that we are on the homelands of the Puyallup Tribe. And one of the great things that we get to do with the Conservation District this weekend is actually work with the tribe at the new landing. So we are actually working with them at their kind of big Earth Day celebration also, to plant in trees. You talked in the proclamation about carbon sequestration. Carbon sequestration is one of those interesting things that can be done, pretty much so, with just the planting of a tree. We know that it works. We know that that does take up carbon within the, within the area. But it's not really the carbon sequestration that makes me excited about trees. What makes me excited about trees is the longevity of the fact that I know that when the roots of the trees grow down, they create space within our community that will continually provide shade, will provide habitat, and will provide an opportunity for our communities to continue to grow and grow together. So this weekend, yes, it may just be this one day on Saturday, not on Thursday. But, um, this Saturday, we know, it's, it's not your fault. I saw it too, but I didn't see it till I was reading.
Me either.
You all sent it out, and we all approved it. It's not your fault.
I'll take the blame.
We all get that. So one of the things that I, I enjoy with this opportunity is that there are at least 15 events that you could go to on Saturday. And if Saturday isn't your day, and you don't think that you can really make it to 15 events, which, those of you who know me, I'm only gonna make it to four. I'm not gonna try to even make it to even 10. So, but there are 15 that are available all throughout Pierce, and it's not just in the backyard right here. But we have three events in Puyallup that you can join us with the Conservation District at. Uh, we have one event at the South Prairie Creek Preserve, which is an amazing little space that we've actually done some fantastic work to create good habitat for our local salmon. And keeping in mind that this is an area that is also important to our agricultural communities. I think sometimes our agricultural communities get lost a lot in Earth Day. And I want to really emphasize that they are, are cornerstones for creating and holding space for our environment. Our agricultural community is a keystone for what we all get to do, and also what we get to eat. I don't know about the rest of you, but I like to eat food. And without our agricultural community, we would be without food on our plates. And in Earth Day, I want to make sure that we don't miss that Earth Day is super important to all of our communities. Um, the other thing that I want to be really clear about is that Earth Day is a good day for us to think about things and about the inequities that are out there around environmental issues. We know that our communities of lower income are impacted the most by ecological damage. And I want to make sure that each and every one of us think about that during Earth Day and think about the one thing that we can do to make a difference. Um, I'm a big believer in it doesn't take us planting a whole forest, but it does take us all planting a tree, and it's way more fun to plant trees together. So this is your weekend to join us at multiple sites. You can also check out our website. And not to outdo the calendar that was already talked about, um, because we collaborate on calendars and we collaborate on things very frequently. But we also have a green calendar that we just debuted at the Conservation District that actually gathers many events from all over Pierce County. Because we know that Earth Day, yes, is this weekend, but we hope that you're inspired to join us many other weekends on multiple sites that we have all throughout Pierce County. So, thank you for your proclamation. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your opportunity to expand the community's knowledge of what we can do to help, just a little bit at a time.
Well, thank you for sharing. Uh, we'll, we'll do a public hearing in a few comments before doing a photo. Uh, for the record, councilmember Mello has joined us online. At this time, I will open the public hearing for anyone, uh, on, uh, anyone in the room who wishes to testify on proposal number R. 2023-50. If there is anyone, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will go ahead and go to online. If there's anyone online, please press the raise the hand icon in Zoom or press star nine on your phone's keypad. Uh, bomb, give them a moment. Let's see if we have anyone online. Go ahead and stay there at the podium. Is there anyone online?
First, we have Erica.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Campbell and council. Uh, this is Erica Snell, Around-the-Clock Child Care Center. And, um, I just wanted to make note that regarding your, uh, proposal of, I believe you said 40% decline in carbon, businesses through Pierce County, I wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that there's a lot of new green energy technology or relative, uh, new to, um, public access, I should say. But, you know, really, um, there's been a lot of, uh, reviews and research on specific to biogas. And our permitting department for businesses does not have any type of code for biogas, so they don't allow it. And this is for sewer. So specifically to ATC Center, our business model is to be green, zero carbon childcare center. And, um, one of the things that we had pursued when it came to the sewer option was, was, you know, how do we do this clean and effectively and, uh, proper? Uh, but we were not able to succeed, uh, because Pierce County does not have any type of, uh, code or regulation on sewage waste in this green technology. Biogas, you can Google it. Um, it's very, very cool. Um, your waste goes out in a toilet, some minimal water use. Um, it vaporizes in heat, and then the gas, you can then, it can be actually fueled for cooking. And that kind of sounds weird. But I encourage you guys to watch the video and alternative sewer options. Um, since you guys have that, um, 40% decrease in, in the carbon footprinting of businesses, it just might be, um, worth your interest to see, like, where permitting and businesses conflict that goal. Uh, because this is kind of newer, newer, um, things that we're, you know, adopting into how we live on a day-to-day. And then, um, speaking to Earth Day, I just wanted to say that that's fantastic. I had a question if any of these activities are kid-related or if your, um, lessons online have a cost associated with them, or if they're gonna be recorded for access later. Because at ATC Center, if you go to our website, we do quarterly curriculum at our preschool. And from April, April to June, we're doing recycling and composting, spring planting and harvest. And so we'll be focusing, focusing on that for the next 90 days. And I'd love to access some content, um, at a preschool level age. So if you could maybe answer those questions on that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else online wishing to make comment?
And next, we have caller ending in 075.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Roxy Giddings. Thanks for taking my call. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I went to a, uh, a Blue Zone meeting last night, and they talked about the trees in Parkland, where I am. And, uh, I, all I could think of was, oh my God, we're, we live on the prairie. Uh, there are certain trees that are on the prairie and, uh, and certain trees that are not. And some trees are weeds as far as the prairie is concerned. And we have the Parkland Prairie Preserve, which is very nice. And they have the oak trees that belong there. But there are also Douglas firs, and they're just weed trees. And, uh, so I was thinking about all these different things and, and how our zoning, uh, does not require solar panels on every new building that's built. And, and it, there should be. And insulation is terribly important. And I just, oh, I've been doing this for, I don't know how long, uh, 50, 60 years now. And, uh, and so I'm very glad to see that we are acknowledging that we in fact do have Earth Day in Pierce County, and it's wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else online wishing to make comment?
No hands at this time.
Seeing none, I'll close the online. Uh, I'll bring it back to, uh, in chambers. Uh, if you please come to the podium, identify yourself for the record.
Oh, hey, my friend. Uh, I'm Eric Rizica, and, um, I'm talking about this general public things. Pretend what you talk to about. It's like, why doesn't the government, like, put, like, palm trees up and down the main streets? Maybe even some Christmas lights? Just make it all better. You get back to the general public, people are gonna like, like that more. That's what I'm saying. Um... That's right now? Oh, hell it.
That would be a colorful idea.
Yeah. And it's like, uh, this is part of my general, uh, general, um, public talk. The... There's so much out there we can do. Come on with it. Um... That was my first ima- uh, imagination right there. There's so many that we can approve for this government. So like, get this. You know, you got the, like, the, um, the, um, the white, the, the, um, the, the stripes on the streets. And it's like, imagine, you can pay people and they can put their own words on the streets. So instead of, instead of seeing these white, uh, strips say bliss, happiness, stuff like that. Now the government got more money. Come on. I got, I got stuff like that. Um, no, I appreciate the talk, though. Those are good people. I hope you pass the initiative, and, um, thank you for service.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment? With that, I will close public comment, uh, and, uh, bring it back to the council for other comments. We'll start with councilmember Denson.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to everyone who's, um, taken the time to come and speak today. Thank you, Mr. Dix and Ms. Wilson and Ms. Coggan, for all of your hard work on behalf of the community and the county to improve sustainability. Um, there's so much work to do, and I'm so excited to hear about all almost overwhelming number of things happening on Saturday. I too will not get to all the things that I want to get to. And I don't know, Ms. Coggan, you usually can make it to everything. I think you're slipping a little. She's the one that will make it to like 20 events in one evening. I bet she'll make it to more than four, because she won't be able to stand. So if you're not feeling like planting trees, um, you could join me in Gig Harbor to pull some Scotch broom, because that's what I will be doing on Saturday morning on a piece of conservation property that the city purchased in collaboration with some citizens. I mean, it actually is on the ancestral lands of the Skobab people, which are part of the Puyallup tribe. So that's what I will be doing, um, on Earth Day. And if you're not interested in getting your hands dirty, you can get your car cleaned at the classy chassis car wash that is donating a dollar for every car wash to a local conservation fund, the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund. So over in Gig Harbor, um, after you're busy pulling weeds or pulling Scotch broom or planting trees, go get your car washed. And that also will contribute to, to Earth Day initiatives. So thank you all for all your work.
Excellent. Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Um, it's good to hear there's a variety of, at every level of interest, that you could probably find something in Pierce County, from heavy-duty work to just learning. Um, and so really appreciate all of our, um, cities and towns and community groups. Schools are doing things. We've got stuff online. So much appreciation to our department staff and, um, the many organizations, including the Conservation District. Um, I'll do one shout-out for the City of Lakewood. Their entire Parks Department is organizing basically Park Appreciation Day on that day. It's happening at almost every park. I couldn't quite check to make sure it was a pure. But it seems like there's something going on at every single park, um, and, uh, a variety of different things, including the underwater swim area cleanup. I am intrigued. Do we have people going in the water? And I did not check, but that, I was thinking maybe that was possible, and I am not volunteering. So, um, but, um, just really appreciate that we take this time to appreciate and spend time out in nature and care for it, so that it's there for people the next day, the next week, the next month, the next year, and for our children and grandchildren. And keep going. So, um, just appreciate that we take the time, because we need to have that space to live, breathe, supply, and, uh, be here on our planet. So, thank you, Chair.
All right. Uh, thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to give the moment that I appreciate the message of our responsibility to be good stewards of the land. The, the proclamation just goes a little beyond that, and I'm not able to support that part. But I, I agree that we are the gardeners of the world, and, um, I think we do that real, very well. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Uh, I will make some, uh, closing comments here. Uh, what a, what a great day this Saturday. And we have such an efficient staff. Uh, we have corrected the errors. Uh, so we have proclamations that are updated that this Saturday, uh, April 22nd, is, uh, nationally recognized as Earth Day, and we get out and celebrate, get back. And, uh, really, um, it's, it's fortunate that we have the one day. It's unfortunate that it's, you know, not a, a monthly or a quarterly or daily, because it really needs to be addressed, uh, far more. But it starts with really recognizing, um, one, one day to kind of bring it all together and put 42 events on one day, and my over-under is on seven events that you'll make it to. Uh, Dana? So, uh, who's just fabulous at getting out there. Thank you so much for your hard work in, uh, not just talking the talk, but walking the walk, getting out there, getting the hands dirty, showing people how it's done, um, and building our confidence in getting it done. Um, and, uh, I love the idea of planted trees, since it also happens to be Arbor Day on April 22nd. Um, somehow co-opted to Earth Day, but it's, starts with trees, and we love the whole earth that supports those trees. Uh, with that, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cooper?
Nay.
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
And councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is four ayes and one nay.
On a vote of four to one, uh, Resolution 2023-50 is adopted. So, Ryan, bring that fabulous sweater on up here and join, and please, come on up. And whoever. All right, one, two, three. One, two, three, and then one more. Got it. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, moving on on the agenda, uh, we have, uh, Section 8 ordinances, and we have no ordinances before us today. And so we have, uh, Section, uh, 9 Resolutions. Proposal number R. 2023-43. Uh, councilmember Denson for a motion.
Yes, I move proposal number R. 2023-43.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Clerk, will you please read?
A resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing as the middle of Thunder Creek Restoration Phase 3. Restoration Phase Three to the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Funds for funding assistance through the Recreation and Conservation Office. Thank you.
All right. And I believe we have to talk to this, Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. This resolution is authorizing the submittal of a Fennel Creek Restoration Phase Three to the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Funds, also commonly known as the SURF Board, for funding assistance through the Recreation and Conservation Office. The county executive were designated can make the formal application and if awarded, enter into state funding agreement. This is for the Flood Plane Reconnection and Repairian Restoration Project along the right bank of Fennel Creek. Pierce County will apply for $450,000 in grant funding from the SURF Board to help fund the Fennel Creek Restoration Phase Three project. That's Project 1710 in the Surface Water Management Construction Fund. The project will remove barriers, reduce water velocity and limit. The total cost of the project is estimated at $1.7 million. The remaining funds will come from a combination of surface water management and flood planes by design funds. There is also, this was given a due pass recommendation at the April 10th Rules and Operations Committee meeting. This time around, we also have a map in there and I believe it is in online in the, in the package. So you can see where Fennel Creek is and is in eastern Pierce County. Fennel Creek is a tributary to the Pualip River. And just to the west of Rhodes Lake Road, so you get some idea of where it is. And I believe Mr. David Davis, who is not listed on my, but I believe he has been involved in this, I think that's why he's been waiting patiently online, is here to answer any of your questions.
All right. Mr. Davis, did you have anything to add today? And you're still on mute.
Thank you. David Davis, planning and public work, surface water management. No, I don't. I think Mr. Boki described it very well.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council for any questions. Seeing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing before bringing it back to the council. This is a public hearing for anyone wishing to testify on proposal number R 2023-43. In chambers, please come up to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we will go ahead and go online. Anyone wishing to comment online about proposal number R 2023-43, please press the raise the hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your phone's keypad.
First we have caller ending in zero seven five.
Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. This is Roxy Giddings. I would like to just simply say that these kinds of things need to be done and at $450,000 on Phase Three. I would say that we have kind of let the natural systems cease to exist and it's very expensive to recreate any natural system that is doing its job before we come along and mess around. And so if we don't pay attention to what we are given for free, it takes a little upkeep and maybe takes a little bit of money to upkeep our different streams and so on and shorelines and all of that. But as soon as we allow ourselves to get carried away and start putting up rip rap or whatever and we just, we just mess around with it until it has to be repaired, such as now, because otherwise they'll never feed those orcas out there. So I'm very glad to see this happening and I hope we get the money. I thank you very much for doing this.
Okay. Is there anyone else online wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment, bring it back to the council for comments. Are there any comments on R 2023-43? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you Chair. Appreciate the maps getting thrown in there. It wasn't an area that I was super familiar with. So when, I believe it was Councilmember Morrell that asked that that be included, just so people understand how things go and the impacts upstream when we're trying to, to support the health of the sound. We can't just focus on the sound. We have to look at way upstream and then into our communities. And so this is just one more project trying to support our, our end goal of a healthy South sound. And it's the whole community and the whole watershed that we need to really continue to focus on. And so I love projects that blend and braid funding together so it's not just one entity and using the science and doing it together. So thank you. Full support.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make comment? I just want to again give my thanks to everyone who's done work on this to get this here. These are important funds. We know that the Pualip River continues to struggle with their salmon population and with the pollution levels that they have. And so it's going to be, as Councilmember Hitchens said, upstream, lots and lots of projects to be able to get us back to where we were just a few decades ago. With that, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowver?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is four ayes.
Five?
Five, why did I say four?
Yeah.
Five, two.
On a vote five oh, the resolution is adopted. Moving on to other business and announcements. Normally we'd make announcements for events happening this weekend. I think we already got a really good rundown of that. If you're not sure, follow Dana Cogan on Facebook and you will get a long list. Sorry. Are there any announcements? Councilmember Denson?
Yes, I will add one. Non-Earth Day related event on Saturday, the Emergency Preparedness Fair happening at Gig Harbor High School from ten to three. And that's put on by the Peninsula Emergency Preparedness Coalition. So also important. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Crowver.
Thank you. Thank you Chair. And another event on Saturday is the Compassion Washington has a Health Expo and it will be at the New Community Church of Tacoma at 3102 South 23rd Street. And it's a pretty amazing thing that they put together. They have all these doctors, they come in, they've got dental chairs, they've got massage chairs, they have chiropractic, they have, they serve food and it's quite an event. And it is complimentary healthcare and from nine to four, I believe I said, did I say that already? Yeah, nine to four. So if y'all, if, if anybody is, is having issues with finding doctors, getting healthcare, this is where you go. Everyone is welcome. All complimentary.
You had me at massage chair.
Yeah, I was like, that's where, I will be there part of the day. I have three other events myself, but they're all family, different family.
Well, it is truly a busy day that we celebrate so much in our community. With that, no other business or announcements. This is Citizens Forum. Actually, I have a very nice script for Citizens Forum. This brings us to Section 11 of our agenda, Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity we afford the public to address the council on issues of significance to or affecting Pierce County government that did not otherwise appear on today's action item agenda. There is a three minute limit. First I'll go to those within chambers and please come forward and state your name for the record.
So, Eric Muzika, hi my friends. You guys, this school violence, this is out of pocket. It really hurts. You know, President Biden, he said that speech. It's like, these families can't go to sleep. They can't put a blanket over their family? That really hurt. I lost it to that a couple times. Let's improve it, right? Let's go and put on, you know, we put security guards outside these schools. Maybe the main entrance, the parking entrance. And within the parking entrance, also the main entrance. And we got metal detectors inside the, inside the schools. For the people that are like, when they come out of there and they're not in the, the school There's lots more we could do. Let's just make it better school, honestly. Just configure it to a square. So now we got a square right here. And it's like, you know, one, two, three, four, five, all that, all those grays right there. They're all bold and it's all square. And then you build the fencing around it. You got the security around it. And what's in the middle? Probably a playground, you know, some basketball, some soccer. I'm saying. This is better ways to make this school, it really hurt what's happening in this, because I know this, um, the people that come out of pocket and they, and they just like, like, commit violence on the school children that should not be. It really hurt. I lost tears to that. I mean, I got a couple more up today. And then like, I mean, let's not go through. Now we got, you know, Eric Muzika's, let's call it the, you know, the education. Yeah, so we just start out and it's like, you know, sixty percent of the people can like create their own vote for their next class. And then thirty percent already, thirty percent of the, of the students put up their vote for their class. So my class would be the streets and other things. But, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment at this time on anything of significance to the council? Seeing none, I will go ahead and let's go to online. Is there anyone online wishing to make public comment? Please press raise the hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your phone's keypad.
First we have Erica.
Go ahead.
Thank you Chair Campbell and Council. Amy, I think that the event that you just mentioned, the healthcare expo event is just incredible. There's so many families I know that just cannot access the right type of medical with the way our inflation is right now. I mean, my staff cannot get assistance with, if they're making twenty to twenty-four dollars an hour, they don't, they don't get assistance for medical. They, they have to pay six, you know, six hundred dollars a month or, you know, my, my business specifically is small and we're expanding and we'll be offering medical starting in July. So that'll be a relief for them, but it takes, you know, growth in a business and sustainability to be able to offer those things. So for small business, business employees, like this is just such a fantastic event and I would like to share it with the small business community. But I did not get the location when you were speaking of that. And if you could just share that, I appreciate you so much for bringing that up and I'm just looking for a little bit more information on it. Thank you.
All right. We'll follow up after we conclude public comment. Anyone else wishing to make comment online?
No other hands.
Okay. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back. Councilmember Crowver, did you have the location?
I do Chair. And also Erica, it's in my e-letter. I think you got signed up for that. I think it went out hopefully last week. But this address, it is the New Community Church of Tacoma, 3102 South 23rd Street. And also there is another one coming up in Sumner and I believe in a couple months. I don't know the date off the top of my head. I'm thinking June 22. And I'll announce that as we get closer to that as well. They're still setting up some of the doctors and what to, to work. Yeah, it's really, and they had, the one I went to before, they had a food bank setting up up front and so people had access to that. They had shuttle, shuttles that they were going actually to like South Center and they were picking up refugee children. And it, there's quite a story on that. But yeah, it's quite an outreach. It's amazing. We were able to do ARPA dollars and they got their own box trucks so, and they know exactly, you know, this piece of equipment goes here and they stack it, they go in, they set it up for a day and then they're done. It's, it's almost kind of like when they set up Quest Field or whatever for, when the virus came around and, and boom, it's like, wow. So, there you go. Thank you Chair.
Fun for the whole family. All right. Any more business before council today? Seeing no more business before the council, we are adjourned. Thank you.